Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Today is January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Record meeting, Commissioner's Court, Liberty County. The record show we do have a court established. Commissioner Carbas, Commissioner Arthur here today. Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Whitmire are by way of zoom. We do have Mr. Fourth Court today. So with us all rise, please give the use of our pledges and pledge to the education.
Please face the American flag.
A pledge to the US.
Flag. And to the republic which stands.
The liberty of Texas for all.
For all.
Thanks to the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag.
Easy to see, Texas one state.
Under God.
Well, thank you for your reading lessons today. We ask that you continue to bless this court with wisdom as we serve your community, Father. We ask that you be with all the civil servants in this county, sir. Be with the police departments, the fire departments, first responders, school leaders, sir. Be with all those that work on it. We just give you praise in all things and bless this court and Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Those is a pro-pleasure to think we gave you that prayer. Dear Lord, please be with Sheriff Ray Rollins' twenty-ninth birthday.
Thank you, Judge.
It's still twenty-nine.
Somewhere in there, yes, sir.
The nine is correct.
Happy birthday, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Don't feel any older, do you? No, you don't feel any older, do you?
Yeah, I'm not, not.
Then what?
I'll be on the spot, yeah.
Hey, it's okay, I may feel the same.
Thank you.
Cold weather does it to us. Uh, public comments, anything today? Do we have anybody signed up? All right, then, Ms. Chambers, it's rapidly time for the, uh, the brands to be either relinquished or at least proven up. I think the Yellowstone brand has already been taken, correct?
Probably so, yeah, but it's, we're getting to the last month, so I had to remind, I see, at the, the other night, there was a few people, it's like, your brands, you know, you gotta get your brands done, so every, I mean, I, people know, but they got one more month till they February again. And Lynn, when's our last day to register a vote?
January thirty-first.
Okay, got one more week to register a vote, too. Get it done, get it done.
That's right. Okay. All right, the next item is declare any conflicts of interest on our agenda today. Does anyone have any items to declare? Conflicts. Not hearing anything, let's move on, consider agenda. Is everyone had an opportunity to look over and, and the way we have some battles. For Trevor Van, Paul Lowery, eleven hundred and nine dollars and forty cents. How much do I? Hundred and nine dollars and forty cents. Thank you.
With the additions, make a motion to approve. There.
You got a motion to approve, second grade, to approve, Senator General, with these additions. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Mr. Whitmire, I couldn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. All those likewise, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Record agenda today. Our Marshall Bill, I know you're there, uh, first item.
Morning.
Morning, how are you today?
Doing good, thank you.
You had enough rain yet there, Chief?
Uh, we are not under burn ban, how about that?
That's what I want to hear. Okay, consider approval of order of authorizing March second. Fireworks sales honorary takes at the beginning of February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, you want to lead us through that, Chief, and see what we're gonna do with this one?
Judge, we have to put this on the agenda each time they're, they're putting out something for the Texas or any fireworks display for the commissioners to approve. And we have to do it prior to the specific date. So it's left up to you gentlemen whether you want to approve or not. We sell fireworks in the county, so.
Okay. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second grade, to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, make a motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number two, from Ms. Berger, District Attorney, considering approval of District Attorney's Office paying one half of the Liberty County Sheriff's Office phone extraction program from gray shift at a cost of nine thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars from their special investigative fund. Total cost eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety. So, uh, they're gonna pay half, and you're gonna pay the other half share?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion to agree, second from Bruce, approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire, did you say aye?
Aye, yes, sir.
Thank you, all right, got you. Although sometimes there's a little delay in here, so I got my, my good ears on this side, bad ears on this side. Number three, for Mr. C, considered approved payment application number nine to light construction in amount of one billion twenty thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-six cents for construction manager of this services for the new sheriff's office and JP three addicts. Anything to discuss on that, just standard. We owe some money for building the, the building.
Yeah, a little bit.
Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve. There.
Okay, motion to Bruce. Give Leon that second on that one, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, make a motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number four, from Land Barter Group, considering approved bids on deleverage tax properties. C. Reed, fifteen oh one, Coleman, for fifty thousand, numerous properties, uh, Barrow for eighteen thousand, Finley for five thousand, Lee, twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents, Hugh Stevenson, sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven, Russell, four thousand thirty dollars and ninety-nine cents, Helms, seven thousand three hundred, and Ellen Paulman, eight thousand, and then the last from Metlin, six thousand two hundred and ten dollars. I think there's numerous other properties that should be listed, is that correct?
Yes. My next question is to Matthew Poston, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir.
Um, we have probably not recognized this earlier in our land barter or land deals, when it addresses just a pin number on the agenda, but in the package you have several, and I'm referring mainly to item ten, where we just have two pin numbers, but there's actually like forty-eight separate lots. When we're voting, do we just vote on the two pin numbers that are on the agenda, or can we reference the package to include all of them?
The agenda should cover every, every, it's up for discussion and up for voting. So, uh, if there's a conflict between the, the agenda and the packet, the agenda is gonna prevail. Uh, and so, uh, I would urge whatever motion is considered by the court to, to confine only to what's, what's on the agenda.
Still have a very clear location, so.
Yeah.
So if, if they included stuff in the packet, but it didn't make it on the agenda, I would, I would urge them to resubmit for a new agenda, item X, court. And, and, you know, let's just do the work that we can do right here.
Well, as to reference to item ten, again, there's only two pin numbers, but the price there is for the whole forty-one or forty-eight, I don't exactly how many lots are, are in there. So being, or including item ten, I'm sure there's more through here that I'd have to just look at. We can't even approve item ten because it's just for those two lots and not the entire package.
Yeah. Probably carve out ten, just carve out ten entirely, I would recommend, and, and, you know, let's do it, you know, uh, again at the next court.
Now, most of them, most, everyone except maybe one or two has more than what is listed on here.
Oh, well, then, we might just want to consider, uh, reconsidering this again next court.
No.
I'm moving to retain, let's clean up the whole, uh, document, we're glad you're there, for. Motion to second, please second. I'll second. Thank you, all right. Motion from Red, second Leon table, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, make a motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
And y'all do realize, the next time this is on here, it's probably going to be an entire book that they're gonna have to write.
Okay. So, you know, we're answering another question on the number two. You had.
The number two.
You want to clear that up sometime between, uh?
Correct, please, yes, yeah.
Anyway, let's call transparents. Okay, all right. Number five, from Commissioner Carbas, we consider a print in a local agreement between Liberty County Precinct One, be a day, a period of one year, cooperate mutually in maintaining streets, roads, niches, and recreational areas to provide better service to the public and reduce, avoiding costly duplication of equipment, if that's your standard, interlokal.
I'm always in love.
All right. You're taking a motion, approve, approve. Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second Bruce, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, make a motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number six, from Commissioner Carbas, we consider approved, continuing certificate for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three renewal of the road used bond for joy resources in precinct one, Bruce, everything you know.
Down the road fourteen oh nine, it's my man in the city of Liberty, but I have no problems with it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion Bruce, second Greg, to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, make a motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number seven, also, well, you're busy, weren't you?
I cleaned up here.
Considered approved the appointment of the following, Kathy Warner, Lynn Jones, Bob Johns for two-year terms, and adding Justin Hatcher to replace Lynn Pruitt for a one-year term. Lynn did resign midterms to the ESD number three fire, uh, as fire commissioners for the Westlake area. And everybody's said they want to.
The brands that.
Any discussion? entertain them, approve.
Second.
Motion Greg, second from Bruce, to approve, all favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, Mr. Douglas, considered and approved request, various proposed plant application, particularly the potential division precinct four, reduce the member block list from fifty feet to forty feet. If you want to fill us in on this, I've looked at it.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have some guests here today, Terry Reeves, who is from Jones and Carter, engineering firm, they represent his property owner, Kingland Development, his name is subdivision, has property with twenty-seven acres in the toll area, uh, and his lies partially in Harris County and partially in the river county. Terry's here today, he's got, he's been giving handouts this morning already, he'll make presentations, they're gonna be asking that they be getting an appearance so that they can reduce their lot size, this is where some of their lot, nothing to forty feet. Terry, come up and make a reference.
With the camera and everything, do I need to put this? No, it's just kind of, rather than with your, like, what you. See that, the package? This is my, uh, project here from LGI, they are actually, so within, uh, kind of directed to the first kind of eleven by seventeen, you look at the, kind of the sanity map, and it shows the full yellow highlighted area, you get an idea where it's at. And that's the, the LGI tract there, within the overall, uh, property. The, the overall Kingland Development is actually in Liberty, Harris, and Montgomery County, partially in the city of Houston, ETJ, and then this property is unincorporated Liberty County. Uh, it will have direct access off the Grand Parkway, on the southern side, you actually have, I believe, that's Community Drive, and then on the, that's the only one, that's the only one, you'll have a theater on the Grand Parkway as well. So then, the request is, is a couple of things, well, primarily for this particular piece of Liberty County, the minimum lot size is fifty feet, uh, they're proposing, I think, fifty, forties, and like this little cluster product. And, you know, for that, they're wanting to do above and beyond as far as, uh, the open space, the, the infrastructure as well. So you're talking this entire, I kind of put together a little point of, of the things that they would be doing, they're gonna be in this facility district, which is home, home garage management district, public water system, public sewer system, public drainage system, all owned and maintained by the district. The, the roadway infrastructure is concrete, and the road is compacted, reinforced concrete tape, uh, with underground storm sewer. And the, I believe, kind of at the bottom, just because it creates a better street theme, and generally, um, it's just better to have a little growth for the community and more commensurate with what LGI is used to doing is, instead of the twenty-two foot wide street for twenty-eight feet wide, as a minimum, so you got a little bit more in front of the house, um, and the concrete's a little bit thicker, so more six-inch concrete versus a five and a half, one-year old street.
When we had our meeting, I sent in during our meeting.
Yes, sir.
There was a question, David, about drainage, and we was going to.
This is, this is the present of the areas during.
Correct.
They're gonna ask about drainage, and it has to be approved by us, and it also has to be approved by Harris County.
That's correct, and so, so far, so for the rest of the, the majority of the Kingland development that we proceeded with so far is really right off of the twenty-one hundred, and so that's got Montgomery County and Harris County, and so you guys are very much in a similar situation where majority of that property was Montgomery County, but they didn't, at the time, didn't have Atlas Fourteen, didn't have all those things, but they were really good developers, and it was like, well, that's water damage side county line, first of all, and you got downstream, Harris County, we got downstream, Kingwood, so we, we invited them, Atlas Fourteen, follow all the Harris County rules, they're a little bit more stringent, that's where everybody's going, and everybody's life's gonna be better if we could do that. They agreed without doubt, we got all of our drainage studies for that deal approved by Montgomery County and Liberty and Harris County, water control district, and it all mean Atlas Fourteen.
Like in my Harris County. Just in like in my.
And that's the plan here as well, even though this property is only two hundred and forty-two acres for LGI, they're part of the master plan, and so, a lot of our infrastructure actually draining kind of under the Grand Parkway and through the other property that Castle Hill were primary under. So even though it's one component of the master plan, it's, it's a master plan of the twenty-six hundred acres, and all that drainage works on third, and is managed by the district.
David. David. Yes, sir. Has a hydrology study been submitted to LGI?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Way to talk, going in the process here.
Okay.
Question here is the variance, that's it.
Well, right now, all they're addressing is the variance, then they get the, they gotta get the preliminary plans, everything else approved.
Yeah, based on the variance, yeah.
So right now, just what you gotta know where we stand, so LGI is the owner, or will be the purchaser, developer, and homeowner. And so what they're requesting, and this was kind of a preliminary workshop to give all the commissioners really, hey, guys, we wanna come back next meeting and actually present an actual approval today, it's really just almost like a preliminary workshop, if you guys answer questions, let us come back and address them if you do have them, and then even next week, or next two weeks, right? Uh, we would only ask for conditional approval. A conditional approval means that you guys would approve the lots less than fifty, uh, subject to us entering into a development agreement with the county, who would agree to all these above minimum standards, but that would bind the landowner to the public water system, the public drainage system that I think I put in here, but one of the things, and I'll show you in an example, they're big on tree preservation, so like, they're gonna preserve a twenty-foot buffer around the perimeter and not clear, create separation from the trade areas, you know, dog park, walking trails, things that are above minimum, um, the things along the Grand Parkway that are visible, we don't want a wood fence, we don't want ride iron and nationary that looks nice from the freeway, those things would go into the development agreement with the county as a compromise or a part of the agreement to do some lot plus something essentially.
Your intention is to begin on the Harris, Montgomery County side first?
But LGI would actually start on this first, and it's almost like a development within the master plan, so the only builders, so they would be the developer and the builder within this two hundred and forty-two acre, and then Castle Hill is the master developer that's developing over there and other places simultaneously.
If you approach Harris County, Montgomery County, that's.
So again, the Harris County and Montgomery County, uh, current general plan and phase one development, we have forty-foot lots today, and so that kind of goes hand in hand with, you know, what we need to do here to be competitive. You know, you're on that side of the line, and you go over here, and you can't offer the same product, which is disadvantage, uh, so that is one of the other reasons. But just to kind of give you an idea, we wanted to, we kind of mess one area with the judge and commissioner, uh, would be month or two before, before Christmas, uh, we put together a plan that, that, that would be the minimum standards plan, it's really just a plan that meets all the county requirements today, and you can see that plan would generate eleven hundred to ten lots, but we only have about five point six percent of open space, and there's no tree buffers, so it's none of all the extra stuff that's just beastable. Then the second plan, which is a little bit prettier here, is really what we're proposing to do. We actually get less lots, even using smaller, some of the forty-foot lots, we get eleven oh seven. Well, we've got twenty percent open space, uh, we've got almost fifty acres of open space in the deal that is tree preservation and walking trail, our detention is not just to walk, a drive, a drive bottom with a lake with fountains, and, uh, it's just a more attractive community. And so, part of that, I guess the last little land, David, open space plan was just really what we're planning currently, just to highlight the, uh, the tree planting, the, the, all the green space and development, and the very last page is just the side-by-side, the stats of the two, here's what I could do with minimum standards, here's what I was gonna do, and just what it looks like at a side-by-side for, for what we're requesting. Is there any questions from you guys?
Yeah, y'all, y'all take a timeout to visit with the school superintendent, yeah.
As far as chamber, uh, between Dayton and Cleveland, uh, not outside of the meetings that you and I had at the, at there, I believe, if the, if we're gonna do anything swapping ones, uh, there, it's very challenging.
Yeah.
To, to swap school districts.
Yeah.
And to my knowledge, that hasn't been done, where they legally can swap boundaries for where the kids go.
Yeah.
What we have been doing is talking to Castle Hill, as well as another adjacent landowner Endeavor, who has thirty-two hundred acres, and the reality is, between what Castle Hill has in Liberty County and what Endeavor has in Liberty County that's signed to Dayton is pretty substantial.
Yeah.
And I think between those two landowners, uh, another school over there is part of warranted, and whether they can strategically situate that, where their community that attend that school, that's really good.
Well, the reason I'm asking, you know, if you're gonna have to carve out some property space for a school, it would be easy to go visit with schools for pretend projects, any decision we make, although we might look at the consideration for the forty-foot lot, so you can move forward, at least with the design, you know, that's gonna be a contingency there, and I don't know, Matthew, can we do that, or do you know, right offhand?
I don't know, offhand, yeah. I'd have to look at that.
Yeah. You know, the, I like the design, I like the product that you're offering, curb and gutter, detention, green space, it's all great, but we're at this little point in time where we can really, can really put the kink in the chain with the school district, unless you talk to them, and find out, you know, how can they plan to make this really, you know, and, uh, that's just it, is it gonna be the Cleveland aspect wanting to relinquish? You know, that, that part forces their districts, and they take it or they relinquish to Cleveland, and Cleveland's already in any of that.
Right, so. That's a part that, from the legal standpoint, and I've yet to, yeah, see happen, where one relinquishes to the other, because they use the land as a, own in their road that to sell bonds, and how that validates those bonds.
If you wanna sell a bond today, you're out of luck.
No, I understand, yeah, but when you change that boundary, a lot of property validates the previous bonds, but, I think from a strategic standpoint, working with the Castle Hill, Endeavor, who owns the majority of the land, it's further away from, uh, farm growth. That's probably in the, the best interest of this community, so that's really where the.
Leon or David, is this in your, which area is this gonna be?
It's mine, Jake.
All right. All right. What's your thoughts?
I'm not for reducing the fifty to the forty, I'm not for it.
Uh, Judge, I, I haven't really taken a look at this yet from a fire code standpoint, uh, fire hydrants and things like that, so I'm, I just want to throw that in, I, I have not looked at this yet.
Okay. From the, from the fire standpoint, I think we put it in our term, our conditions for approval, that the, the public utility, uh, the public municipal utility district would provide fire flow to all the residential homes, which means, uh, your fire hydrant spacing less than five hundred feet, and then your, all your man collectors are thirty-six feet minimum, so a car could be parked on both sides of the road, fire truck can be down the middle, uh, the water pavement section in the community, the twenty-eight feet also helps with that, uh, you can have a car parked on one side, fire truck maybe through, but that, that would be a condition of the, uh, of the approval that the community provide, both fire protection from a water suppression, the water supply and pressure standpoint, but also the ingress, egress for the, the fire trucks.
Gentlemen.
That forty-foot, yes, uh, lot size in their master plan, we're developing, we're bringing them to market at the end of this year in the, uh, the Harris and Montgomery County component of the development, which has forty. Yes, sir.
So today, y'all aren't asking for, it's in the approval, y'all are just discussing it and intending on, on presenting a development agreement at a later time, is that correct?
Yes, sir, today's kind of a preliminary workshop to really present it to all the commissioners who maybe have not seen this yet, um, with the hope to actually come back in, in two weeks and obtain conditional approval, which means that you would only approve the variance if you successfully, uh, enter into a development agreement, which, which has all the conditions that I kind of put into the package, which talked about, uh, the fire, our firefighting, uh, water system, public drainage system, uh, the upgraded manatees and the, the landing, I think it's a ride iron and nationary along the Grand Parkway, all those will be conditions in that development agreement with the, with the county. Matthew?
Uh, well, I mean, so, yeah, I guess. Yeah, I guess it, you know, variances are certainly within Commissioner's Court discretion. Uh the uh you know, whether uh uh you know, generally speaking, I think Commissioner's Courts should be. Uh reluctant to grant variances. Uh unless there are, you know, uh things that we are getting that otherwise we couldn't get. And so it's something to look at, I think, uh you know, when when we have a formal. Uh document with uh with um all of this uh in it, uh you know, I think it's something to consider. I think we don't want to be in a situation in the future is where future developers always look at this as precedent. Uh and say, hey, you know, you did it for them, uh and so, uh you know. We really need to show, uh you know, why in this specific case we're getting something out of it. And why it makes sense.
Matthew, I think we ought to table this, is that, would that be a recommendation on your part?
Well, they they're not asking for action at this point.
That's not the way I, that's not the way I'm interpreting this line item though, this agenda line.
Yeah, I I I believe that it was written uh expecting action, but it turns out. I don't think they're asking for action today so much as this discussion. If if Commissioner's Court wants to discuss further, we could set a a workshop, I I think that's what maybe Jay was about to say.
Cross hidden, it uh I would like to uh. To set up a date for a workshop and where you actually bring out those. If we do this, this is what we get, this makes it better, we do this. This is what you get and you might not get exactly what everybody wants. But I think also bringing the school superintends as well. Uh that is gonna be one of the big selling factors for us is not in a date of school district. Where they can't cope with the growth. So uh while we, if you would, maybe let's look at some towns and dates we'll give to these gentlemen. And get a workshop set up, is that okay? Leon, is it okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine, that that's that's fine, there's things that needs to be done with this and looked at.
I mean, I'm looking at, you know. Overall, looking at this, your product over forty foot lots looks better than the product of fifty foot lots, okay? But you got to sell it. And uh just because Montgomery County or Harris County says they like forty foot lots. Doesn't exactly mean that anybody on this court is gonna like it either, you know, then also. Your school districts do play a big part in our decision making because it uh they are a partner. And then to include maybe down the road, you know, what is gonna happen as far as the. Next session, because there's gonna be a self annexation parcel.
We're not currently in any kind of. Incorporated academy. But that that kind of that part kind of goes out the window, I mean, I did, I would run to the bunny that. Today to meet the county's minimum requirements will actually generate more lots, more people, more families going to Cleveland School. Than our current proposed plan. So if that's the Trump primary driver between more, you know, more people is bad, then meeting all the current requirements we can do that today. I don't believe that brings the type of community that the county really.
Well, I'm gonna tell you the truth, the statistics means a lot.
I decided the house is quality.
So uh anyway, let's set up a workshop and uh I think we're. The transparency portion of this is really good because everybody gets an opportunity to sample those lot.
All the commissioners don't have this package, uh I I sent that to David, David, if you can get that out, there's a. I think there's a word document in there, they kind of have outlines. What we're requesting and really the conditions we're willing to put on the community that I verbally just described. And that's all the the public system, all the increased open space, the trails. Well, the upgraded infrastructure on the paving, um that really should be in line with the county.
Hey, thank y'all.
Leon, did you make a motion?
I would suggest taking no action.
I asked the question if uh, to Matthew, do. Uh do they feel we need to take a table list or take no action on this item?
I I believe no action makes sense at at the moment.
Yeah, okay, I make the motion, we take no action.
Second.
Saying Bruce take no action, all favor say aye. Yes, sir, number nine, I believe, speaking back off this, correct, David?
Yes, sir, that's correct, that's uh put on the agenda. By accident.
It's okay. If we had an opportunity to take no action around. Motion from Bruce saying Leon, take no action, all favor say aye. Number ten. Justice Department's special center approved contract extension request to the. General Land Office on behalf of L G A to allow Gulf Coast time. To finish up the G L O infrastructure grant Liberty County is currently working on.
Yes, sir, we've got a couple of. Then it's retention over in Bruce's thing too. We got uh spring period sheets over in Bruce's thing, used to be four, I think it's now one. A couple of chips on the road. And when we talked to G L O, we actually wanted to wait sixty day. A G L O does not like sixty day extensions, so they had required us to ask for six month extension. So this is to allow us to finish up, get all the paperwork done, draw the hardy uh G L O grants to.
Definitely want them to have time to.
You don't want anything done right now in this one.
I'll agree.
Make a motion to approve bottom ten.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce, say a great, all favor say aye. Likewise, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. See David, number eleven, Senator approved draw number eleven. They request for Gulf Coast, uh number five and the amount of. Four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred ninety eight dollars seventy four cents.
Okay, this has been a pretty easy agenda for me, yeah, I mean, Terry came in here and did most of the work on the on the subdivision issue. Um in discussions with Commissioner Arthur this morning, we have some issues with this by request. And so at this time, I'm gonna ask you to take no action on this until we can get a couple of items straightened out. And I'll bring it back to you at that time.
I'll let Leon have it. Play the motion, say Bruce, all favor say aye. There you go, thanks, sir. And what carries, thank you, gentlemen, number twelve. Mr. Guy, consider for continuing engagement with Mays and Associates. For fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty twenty one fiscal. Uh financial statement audit and single audit report, that's our standard. What's in the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, say Greg, all favor say aye. Likewise, mate. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, Mr. Poston, consider approved amendment to the contract with Tyler Technologies. Modria to comply with changes to law brought by Senate Bill forty one. Okay, Matthew, you might need to tell us back Senate Bill forty one a little bit.
So uh Modria is a online uh dispute resolution tool. Uh that Tyler provides us, uh we've just online J P Court, we're we're gonna going to be bringing on others, but in any event. Um Senate Bill forty one recently changed up the uh um. Alternative dispute resolution court cost. Uh it's roughly the same um amount of dollars, but it's a kind of different formula uh for doing it, and so. Um the the amount that we pay Tyler is paid to us. By each person who who files, uh in it's pass through dollars, this doesn't affect our bottom line whatsoever. But we have to do it to be in compliance with the law.
I make the motion we approve.
Motion, Lee, say from David to approve, all favor say aye. Likewise, the motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, Mr. Poston, Senator approved contractor Texas State University. And precinct six constable's office for funding of investigations of sales to minors. Of e-cigarette and tobacco products. And this is something I don't know a whole lot about, these cigarettes, so Matthew.
Get this on the agenda by uh Constable Hart. And I'm not sure if using. Man, my my internet is acting a little funny, I'm not sure if y'all can hear me. Are y'all there? Okay, so uh I don't know. The program is a uh a apparently a state of Texas program. Uh and it more or less uh provides funding for local agencies to investigate. Uh sales to minors of tobacco and, you know, e-cigarette kind of products at your meat stores and all that sort of thing, so. Um I I don't see any issues with it, uh I'm not sure if Zach said to talk a little bit more about it, uh but he. Uh in a better position to to explain what his intent is.
I make the motion we approve.
Leon, uh say. Did you get that one today? Okay, Dave, got it. Uh all favor say aye. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Uh number fifteen. It's a, Mr. C, consider approved the selection of liability insurances at the renewal date of February fifth twenty twenty two. Including general liability on bill liability and physical damage, property. Contractor equipment, public entity management liability. Employment practices and law enforcement liability. Employment benefit plan administration liability, cybercrime liability and umbrella coverage. So uh see Todd here, we want to visit with us and Mr. C is here too, so.
Yeah, Ben Odom with McGriff and Todd with the assurance that have been working on this is probably the first of December. Like the last week in November after Thanksgiving, I know they met with the uh Sheriff's Department. Because a lot of this has to do with law enforcement and the problem we have with law enforcement insurance. And I'm gonna let. Uh Todd will work, they gave us three options, uh a few changes, some deductibles, we'll let Todd work.
Thank you. I'm wearing every morning, do not have my spit burner building this morning, so. Now, y'all kind of take a look at this every year, the uh we always show two thousand fifteen as a point of reference. If you look at the uh the top left there, it shows your exposure basis, this is kind of what all the insurance programs are based off of. So you're gonna see what was in two thousand fifteen, the overall budgeted number of officers, um and the police volumes. Um if you go down to the bottom of that column, you'll be able to see the total cost of insurance in two thousand fifteen. And it costs uh per one thousand dollars in budget, which was twenty one dollars and sixty nine cents. The next column we're showing um last year for twenty twenty one. And of course, you know, a lot has changed since then, especially, you know, the county keeps growing. Same thing, if you go down to the uh the bottom of the twenty twenty one column, see the the total cost of insurance was about a nine sixty one. Um cost per budget was sixteen dollars and eighty nine cents, so. Still, it's still a good improvement compared to the budget in twenty fifteen. And this year we bought three different options, there's been uh kind of some changes in the programs and. A lot of these carriers are getting really shy about law enforcement liability, it's just, it's all over the news, there's stuff happening every day. Um so what they've done is, we we went out to all all of these standard lines carriers and. They declined, um they declined or or kind of pricing those out of the law enforcement issue. So when you see this law enforcement liability line, that is with a a second carrier. Um it's Q B E is the paper that it's written on. You know, it's solid, A plus rated insurance barrier. Um it's gonna write, take this on, you know, model line. So the uh, let's take a look at option number one here. The first you'll see is the law enforcement liability line item has been taken from one million dollars to two million. The deductible across the board here, they they rose the deductible to seventy five thousand. The uh. The next change on this one is you'll see the umbrella limit has been taken down to two million. And you know, we did that for two reasons, one to to show a little bit of call savings on this. Those ratings that we're seeing this year. And the second is, if we're gonna have a stand alone law enforcement liability. But it doesn't make much sense to keep that really high. Excess limit sitting on top of what's left. Um what's led you, you know, you have toward immunity on, you know, so the auto and the crown. Um the only one that might be a concern is public officials, employment practices, but. We just don't see a ton of those claims going over, you know, that would get three million dollar limit. And this this option still shows the full property limits like down period in the past. That's decreased just a little bit just because of scanner changes that we made, but it's still ensuring every property to full limits. So at the bottom there, you're able to see the uh total cost of insurance, total premium. And then the uh the cost of the budget has gone up to seventeen dollars and twenty cents versus the sixty nine round last year. Option two, we have gone and added uh another million back to the law enforcement liability. Same seventy five thousand dollars deductible, but the big change here is that we are showing an option that caps. The property insurance at twenty five million per occurrence. Now, we've shown you all this in the past, um I've never elected to take it. What that means is, that's not per policy period, that's per occurrence, so. When hurricane comes through here. You know, the damage is a bunch of stuff, they're just saying. They're not gonna pay more than twenty five million dollars for that one occurrence, now you can have five of those in a year and you'll pay up to twenty five million. All the the limits, the the property limits that own billion don't change, you still get four million dollars in courthouse, you still have four million dollars in courthouse. Um they're just not gonna pay more than twenty five for that one occurrence. Whereas before, you know, they they would pay the the fifty seven hundred features of full minutes. So then if we go over to option three. Uh this one's kind of the have it all option, you know, you keep thirty nine dollar law enforcement liability. Um and then add it back in the full property limits. And that takes you to the uh one point one nine nine.
I think our budget limit is one point two million. Sheriff, uh on the law enforcement liability side, two million to three million, what's your thoughts there? I mean, I know we got the jail now, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
I believe that's sufficient.
Yes, sir, so three million.
Yes, sir.
Harold. During Harvey, where we had so much damage at the courthouse. Insurance never did take care of anything on there, did it, or did we not qualify for that?
Uh I think we didn't qualify for it.
So during Harvey, we didn't really have any claims at all because. We didn't, under the current insurance then. We didn't qualify for it, right? Some sort of insurance.
Every chance you gotta take, okay?
Uh I'm just gonna.
And uh, well, I'm between option two and option three myself, Harold, what's your thoughts? Uh on those two, I mean. Once a one percent increase, once a six percent increase. But yet still quite a bit down from the twenty fifteen version.
Yeah. I don't know, it's, it's insurance.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Unless you know what they call it. The only big difference in two and three is basically the per occurrence limit of twenty-five million dollars per seven million.
Correct.
And it doesn't seem like we've ever run over that limit anyway.
And you deductible one.
Correct, yeah.
That, that twenty-five million is based off of models that the insurance companies run, and they're showing you might have one of those per every thousand years. Now, with floods and everything, we're seeing this, this, so always, you know, every hundred years, it seems like every year we have a hundred years or something, but.
Don't say it was.
But, but this wasn't just picked out of outer space, it was kind of looking at everything I had and the locations that they're spread out of.
Also, Todd, to answer Bruce's question of, in, in the, when your name storm, like Harvey, isn't something a little different?
Yes, there is, so um, let's see here. The name storm deductible, uh, you know, we're able to lower that, I mean, in twenty fifteen, we got a five percent. Um, then across the, you know, we, that's gone down a one percent or a hundred thousand minimum per building, so. I don't have a huge difference going, going forward, yeah.
But on plan one, two, and three, that's all the same, so it doesn't make any.
That's true, yes, right, isn't it? We're just saying as compared, as compared with, with Harvey.
I kind of like option two.
And, and now to throw another committee commission, but uh, so option two, if y'all are, y'all are comfortable with the twenty-five million dollar sub, sub limit.
Mm-hmm.
They, they came back to us and on the law enforcement side and said we could raise that.
To three million.
Well, we could raise that to four million for an extra fifty-five thousand on option two. But that again puts us, Mr. Guy, I don't know, I like that.
No. That's generous. No.
One of that question, I would think would be answered by our sheriff over there. Why do we need that extra million for fifty-five thousand? I mean, that's.
No answer. No, I mean, it uh, I'm still between option two and option three, because y'all are feeling to feel the love on option two. Leon, David, you have any questions?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning to option two.
Uh, I, yeah, I agree. Option two.
And Todd, as long as I say here, I know the insurance company, we've been using, changed her name, you said, who's covering what? Who's the law, who's the law enforcement, what's her name?
Uh, QBE Insurance Company.
QBE, and the other was now Intact?
Intact, it's covering everything else.
Just one big, it was, it's changed her name, been in Intact.
And the QBE is, is the same one, one, two answers.
Yes, sir.
On law enforcement. Make a motion to accept option two. Take it.
All right. We got a motion for Bruce to say, ready to accept option two. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise. Motion carries, thank you. Thank you. Who you got there?
Yeah.
Number two, all right. Uh, next item is the executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, we have a consultation starting at five five one one zero seven, one. Uh, need a, got a motion to go into executive session, you have a second? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Question? So now, gentlemen. It's about ten thirty, we're back in regular session. Executive session is completed. Uh, we're moving on to the executive session, item for discussion and possible action. Uh, number one, with uh, Mr. Poston, our county attorney, consider approved actions regarding potential claims against Cowboy Asphal Services. Uh, any discussion, and if so, please say, or want to say the court?
I make the motion that we approve, we're county attorney uh, to move forward with a potential claim against Cowboy Asphal Services. And that also he seek outside counsel for the, to assist him with this.
Second that.
All right, got a motion for Leon, say. David to approve uh, with uh, Matthew moving forward, with uh, potential claims uh, against Cowboy Asphal Services for their, of their work and to uh, hire uh, outside counsel to aid him in this endeavor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, Dave, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion, Bruce, to adjourn, you have a second. Thank you, Greg. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Your.